Good evening and welcome. I will now call to order the June 8, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes Chair Smith, thank you. First, our staff support this evening. Clerk to the Board, Tony Marinick. County Council, Stephen Madcor. Commissioner Schull is attending another county event and will not be attending tonight. Commissioner West is on his way. Roll call, Commissioner Savis.
President.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Welcome everyone. Good evening, we are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. If anybody in the room would like to testify, please come forward. You can fill out a blue card and our clerk will pick them up. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes Chair Smith, first item is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Elected Officials, Item 1, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of Disaster Management, Item 1, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon for Lease the Medical Examiner's Office Space. Total Contract Value is $81,625.44 over two years. Funding is through budgeted County General Funds. Health Housing Human Services, Item 1, Approval of a Contract Renewal with Durgash LLC doing business as Econolod Southeast for On-Call Hotel Rooms for Temporary Housing and Shelter to Our Most Vulnerable Residents. Contract Renewal Value is $1,030,500 for one year. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services for Programs Related to the Governor's State of Emergency Due to Homelessness. Total Value is $1,883,236. Funding is through the State of Oregon. No County General Funds are involved. Tourism, Item 1, Approval of Amendment Number 2, Increasing Funding from and Extending Duration of a Personal Services Contract with Travel Portland. Amendment Value is $256,018 for 12 Months. Contract Value is increased to $425,529 for three years. Funding is through Travel Portland. No County General Funds are involved. Technology Services, Item 1, Approval of a Board Order Authorizing a Purchase Order Through Cooperative Contract with CDW Government LLC for Hewlett Packard Enterprise Aruba Network Switches. Total Value is $399,333.98 for an estimated seven-year life cycle. Funding through Departmental Cost Allocation. No County General Funds are involved. Transportation and Development, Item 1, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement for Provisions of Building Inspection and Plan Review Services with the City of Happy Valley. Agreement Value is up to $50,000 per year for five years. Funding is through Restricted Development Permit Fees. No County General Funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Contract with North Saniam Paving Company for Chip Rock Supply and Hauling. Total Value is $335,740. Funding is through County Road Fund. No County General Funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of Personal Services Contract with Acela Incorporated for Migrating the Acela On-Premises Software to the Acela Cloud Hosted Platform with Five Years Annual Maintenance. Total Contract Value is $1,116,902.50 for five years. Funding is through Development Permit Fees. No County General Funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you Tony, for that Consent Agenda. Welcome Commissioner West. We just read the Consent Agenda, which you are familiar.
Very much so.
Would any Commissioner like to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved for the approval of the Consent Agenda and Commissioner Savis has moved for, has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Scene nine, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Short meeting tonight, so far. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take in-person testimony first. Again, if you want to testify, just fill out a blue card. First, Jason Ellerby. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Jason Ellerby, I'm an Oak Grove resident. What I wanted to talk about today, maybe more along, have long lines of ODOT, but anyways, I thought I'd bring it to this board, as maybe you guys can have some kind of influence in this. I have lived within a half mile of McLaughlin Boulevard my entire life, whether it be in Gladstone in the last 13 years in Oak Grove. And I saw not that long ago that they put in these pedestrian crossings, lighted pedestrian crossings, at Hole Avenue and one at Boardman Avenue. And I think those things have been a great addition. I was wondering if you guys could maybe put in your two cents' worth, if you have a chance, about putting like two or three more of those in, like for example, one at Rizley and McLaughlin, one maybe at Chestnut and McLaughlin. I think those things have really, are really a good idea. Throughout my life, I've seen a lot of accidents, including fatalities, on that stretch of McLaughlin between the Clackamas River and the Milwaukee city limits.
Wow, interesting, thank you for that feedback. 99E, as you know, is a state highway. And does anybody know if those improvements were a part of ODOT's? We don't know.
I don't know.
But you know what? Let's find out. And find out what's going on with that. Your feedback is important, I'm glad you like those safety crossings.
Yeah, I've said, I mean, you know, people, they, you know, hit the button or whatever and then the thing flashes up about pedestrian.
Yes.
And I don't think I've seen like one time where people actually didn't actually stop. They, they actually, you know, did stop.
Good.
And the, you know, person was able to cross.
Well, certainly a good reminder.
Thank you.
Commissioner Savis, do you'd like to address this?
I just want to say that was a part of a state DOT funding program and so I agree, they're working really well and I'm hoping to see more of them. And, you know, sometimes those come in patchwork with partial federal funding or packages that, of federal funding that can be offset and make other dollars available for safety. So there's a big emphasis on safety. So we just gotta keep on plugging away and trying to get as much as we can here in Clackamas on the safety mode. But those dollars might be more directed towards the 205 corridor if they implement tolling and that area of McLaughlin is far enough away that it may not, it may just be prioritized away, but I'll definitely, we'll still be advocating for it. I think everyone's really liking them.
Well, if that tolling, hopefully that does not happen because that's gonna create, maybe McLaughlin will just be a total mess then with people going across the Selwood Bridge and all that, trying to avoid the tolls. So hopefully that never happens.
Thank you, appreciate you coming forward. Up next, Ron Smith. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes. And you have a really good last name.
My name is Ron Smith and I'm from Gladstone, lived there for over 30 years. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to come forward and to be able just to speak and express my thoughts and concerns. I'm here to voice my opposition to the $8,000 proposed to fund the DEI program. I've tried to get a clearer understanding of what exactly DEI stands for and represents on face value. The DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion Program sounds authentic, it sounds pleasing to the ears. The outcome over the last two years indicates something very different to me, something very troubling. The pronouns that we're having to deal with in this time, it seems that I may be in danger of losing, you know, my insurance, my, be fined, I might even lose my job if I mistakenly use a pronoun in the correct manner. I just recently saw something on the, something where, I don't know where it was, but it was a young lady and she was, she was trying to determine which pronouns she would be and it, it was a daily, day-to-day changing event. So that creates problems in that area. The trans movement, we used to be a live and let live society, no more, doesn't happen anymore. Our kids are being forced to listen to misinformation about not being okay to be who they are, who God created them to be. Something has gone very wrong when our society or our government is causing confusion and chaos among our children and division with their parents. This seems to be resulting in mutilation as far as kids trying to do what they can to create a better version of themselves, whether it's by information they received or just misdirection. So this are, these are negative results, I think, associated with the DEI programming and funding. I know that your decisions are difficult and I'd like to pray for you very quickly if I could. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time, this gathering and all who are here. We give thanks especially for the men and women on this commission board. I can only imagine the difficulty in trying to do all things, or trying to be all things to all people. Lord, we pray for your mighty hand to rest upon them. We ask you that you would gift them with clarity, insight, discernment, and wisdom. Lord, help their burdens to be light and their decisions be true. Father, we pray that you put a hedge of protection around them, around their coworkers, around their families. We pray for your light to shine around them, keeping chaos at bay, those who would seek to, to cause confusion and even destruction. Thank you for your everlasting love, which is available to all of us. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will take the hedge of protection any day. I will take the hedge of protection any day. Thank you for your prayer, thank you for coming forward. Next up, Ron Hedlund. Please come forward, make an adjustment in the seat. And please state your name.
It's Don Hedlund.
When you come up sir, you can, in the microphone, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Don Hedlund, Eagle Creek. I want to read from your budget on page 74 about this Equity Diversity and Inclusion Program. This is brought to my attention by you Chair Smith, whenever you said you would like public comment on this. And the purpose of the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Program is to provide equitable access, planning, facilitation, representation, consultation, and relationship services to county employees and the public so they can experience equitable access and enjoy a welcoming and inclusive place to live, work, and do business. The Equity and Inclusion Office has made great strides in achieving both its internal and external goals. I'm gonna leave the goals alone, but I'm gonna say is, just quickly, you got 800 and I think it's $28,000 for this program to go in. I looked at the budget, it looks like it's 4.4 million sitting in this EDI, EIO program for your Equity Office. You have the right to reject this as county commissioners, you have the right to put this money somewhere else. I, you know, back in 20, Labor Day about two years ago, I had a fire up at my place up at Doughty Road in Eagle Creek, and there was no firefighters to put out the fire. And the problem was, is that I almost lost my house, which got me involved a lot with paying attention to what's going on in the county with politics. We should hire people based upon equality and merit. This diversity, inclusion, and equity, which we're all calling DIE, it should die honestly, and we should go back to the original way we've always done it in this country since the Civil Rights Act. And that is equality and merit. We don't be, we shouldn't be hiring people based upon their skin color or gender or any of this other stuff that they're throwing at us left and right. The most important part is that we look at their merit and their equality. We don't put sheriff deputies on the road just because they mark a box. We put them on there because they have the training to go out and interact with the public, which is very important. Firefighters, same thing, these people have inherent skills. And when you look at a resume, you're not looking at any of this stuff, you're looking at whether the person is qualified for the job. And in my opinion, all of this should be under your Human Resources Program. It should not be some outside program you're working in your county. Take it away, put it back in Human Resources, and let them do their job, which is equity and merit, right? I mean, it's as simple as that. We can look at it this way, we can look at all these numbers, I've been studying your budget, you got a heck of a budget, what is it, like 1.3 billion dollars? But, something like this though, you got 1,400 employees, are they qualified for the job and are they hired upon merit? Thank you guys, appreciate it, have a great day.
Thank you Don, very much for coming forward. Gary, would you like to make a comment on the budget? He mentioned a couple of numbers, would you like to clarify?
Yeah, sure, the entire county budget is 1.8 billion dollars. For the Equity Office, it's around, I don't have the exact number, around 820,000, that's for the staff and the program. The other 4 million is ARPA money that you've designated to give to nonprofit, nonprofits to support the community, and so that's just housed in that office, but that's not for the office.
It's a bit confusing. We had to do something with the federal ARPA dollars, so we put it here because it's going out to nonprofits and other organizations. So it looks like the EID budget is somewhat inflated, but it's really around 823, for good or bad, I'm not making, taking a position, but I just wanted to clarify the number. But thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, first thought Gary is that I think there's a misunderstanding out there that this is a new program. It's not a new program, it's been in place for how long? 20 years?
About 20 years, yes, this work.
20 years. And, you know, that budgeted amount is not extraordinarily, oh, not even at all, it's not extraordinarily higher. And if your plan is implemented, it would be actually less than that as I understood. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify those points.
Thank you Commissioner Savis. Any other in-person testimony? Any other people would like to testify? Tony, do we have anyone online who would like to testify?
Madam Chair, we'll begin with Mr. Bill Weir. Mr. Weir, please state your name and area of residence, you will have three minutes.
Good evening Chair Smith and Commissioners. Bill Weir Damascus. Last week I gave testimony regarding HB 2002B, which allows a child of any age without parental knowledge to receive an abortion for an irreversible sex-changing treatment and procedures. It also decriminalizes concealing the dead body of a newborn child, among other mandates. Today I want to talk about the criminal and civil liability against a citizen resident who violates sections of this bill. Upon, and I'll read from the bill itself, "Upon complaint of any citizen resident of this state, the Oregon Medical Board may investigate any alleged violation of this chapter. If after the investigation the Board has reason to believe that any person is subject to criminal prosecution, the Board shall lay the facts before the proper district attorney." It'll take depositions of witnesses, compel the appearance of witnesses, require interrogatories, and compel the production of documents. Irrespective, irrespective of any criminal prosecution or the result thereof, a person can bring a civil action against that person. The plaintiff who prevails in a claim can get economic and non-economic damages. For the plaintiff who is an individual, or $5,000 a day that the prohibited conduct occurred for the plaintiff, that is the health care facility, reasonable attorney fees, and appropriate equitable relief. All of this is real stress on the family and could wind up with financial ruin. Seeing that this bill or other future bills that may very well pass, what are you going to do to protect parents' rights or the protection of their children? Any criminal action will pass through our county district attorney and courts. You have the ability to pass a resolution or other action that would show your resolve against this monstrous act that allows parents the rights, that prevents the parents the right to safeguard their children. Joe Biden recently hosted the Super Bowl champs, the Chiefs, at the White House. One player wore a tie that had written in Latin vulnerare presidio, which in English is protect the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, that is the end of my registered list. If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? We have some time tonight. Okay. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update, that's me. I like to use my time to share good news about our programs and staff here at Clackamas County. First, our Transportation Maintenance Division within our Department of Transportation and Development was recently asked to place an audible walk, don't walk signal at the corner of Brown and Wilsonville Roads in Wilsonville. The request came from a local teacher who works with a blind student. Our staff quickly took action and installed the sign, and the teacher wrote a follow-up note to our staff. "Thank you for your help getting the audible signals installed. I can't believe I made a call one day and they were installed the next day. Magical. My student says, 'I don't need to worry about that one signal anymore now that I have an audible signal to trust.'" So thank you to our staff in Transportation Maintenance, Carl Olson, Ryan Hickson, Aaron Gutterham, and their team who took quick action to support our public. Next, the National Association of Counties, every year gives out National Association of County Awards, NACO Awards, to counties for their phenomenal work. Every year Clackamas County gets numerous awards for the last 20-plus years. This year, because we've won awards for almost everything, we really only sent one application this year of which we got an award. And it is for our Water Environment Services Team Tri-City Outfall Project Outreach Campaign. We received a NACO Achievement Award for the category of civic education and public information. So during the first months of the pandemic, Water Environment Services developed a communication method to educate Oregon city residents on the need to install a pipeline under a city park, which necessitated a public vote of the city, the residents of Oregon City. The Oregon City voters approved the measure at 73% approval, and the pipeline will now serve 200,000 customers throughout the entire Water Environment Services service area. So because of the great work our team did, they are recognized with a NACO National Achievement Award. So the award will be presented in July, and then we'll do a presentation here at the county afterwards to recognize our staff. So congratulations to the Water Environment Services Team. That is my update for today Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you Gary, love hearing good news from our employees. Up next is Commissioner Communication. Commissioner West, you're up first.
I don't have a lot this week, a lot's happened though. I'm really proud of this board's constant action and leadership on how to address the scourge of Measure 110. This board has been pretty unanimous in its belief that Measure 110 has been an object failure and is the reason, and continues, not only a reason for many unnecessary deaths in our community, but it has also continued to really cause the issue around addiction and mental health and those things to become unmitigated disasters throughout the state, especially in our urban areas. And those of you in the audience here who are listening may not know this, but in our last meeting, we made a motion to pose two questions to the voters of Clackamas County, and we're gonna urge the other counties to pose these same two questions throughout the state of Oregon to build some momentum forward. And it was basically to say, hey, how do you guys think Measure 110 is working and should this be repealed and should the legislature and the governor do their job and, and deal with this issue? And so we passed that the other day, and I'm really proud of the bold leadership coming out of Clackamas County. We can't, we want to, we wish we could do more, we wish that we could just overturn it in Clackamas County, we wish we had that constitutional authority, but, but it doesn't look like we do. We're just one county in a bit, in a, out of 36 other counties. And under a federal system, we have, we can only operate within the scope of which our offices allow us. And that's why there are different layers of government, is because it provides checks and balances. On the local level, unfortunately, we don't have the ability to overturn or repeal by ourselves, but we want to make sure that our voters have more of a voice in this, and that we on a local level can begin to maybe champion that voice with other local governments that are having to deal with this bad policy that's hurting people. That's, that's hollowing out our urban areas and really causing a lot of angst. So I'm just, I'm proud of what we did earlier this week. And we're gonna do more, we're gonna do what we can, we're gonna try to be creative, and we're going to overturn every rock and look around every corner and be innovative to find the best way we can to not only get people the recovery services they need, and the hope that they need, and to work with our private partnerships and our nonprofits and our faith communities to help people find a pathway to self-sufficiency and wholeness. But along the way, we have to also get barriers and roadblocks out of the way that are preventing recovery from happening, and Measure 110 does that. So, yeah, look for more, but that in the future. And I'm excited about, once again, our leadership, and so it is, I think it's, I think it's the role of local governments to be a watchdog for local communities, and so that's what we're trying to do here.
Thank you Commissioner West. Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Thanks, Mr. West, I wanted to share this with you guys tonight because this is data that we have about a recent poll that was done by DHM Research. And it says, "In 2020, Oregon voters passed Measure 110, which is to criminalize the possession of small amounts of drugs and redirected cannabis taxes to fund drug treatment programs. Since then, Oregonians have continued to report that crime is increasing and remain concerned about the prevalence of drug addiction and overdoses in their communities. In April, this April 2023, DHM Research asked Oregon voters about repealing portions of Measure 110 to bring back criminal penalties for drug possession while continuing to use cannabis taxes to fund drug treatment programs. Here's the key findings from the survey. A majority of Oregon voters think that Measure 110 has been bad for Oregon, so we know that. More than 6 in 10 voters think that Measure 110 has made drug addiction, homelessness, and crime worse." crime worse. 63% of voters support bringing back criminal penalties for drug possession while continuing to use cannabis taxes to fund drug treatment programs. That's positive. Voters became more supportive of bringing back criminal penalties for drug possession when hearing about the state's struggle standing up treatment programs. More voters believe that the root cause of homelessness is drug addiction and mental health problems rather than a lack of access of affordable housing. So what this states is, a clear majority of voters support bringing back criminal penalties for drug possession while continuing to fund treatment programs. I never thought this should be, had been, should have been decriminalized to start with, quite frankly, because one of the ways that people can get treatment and get what they need if they're in the criminal justice system. But the biggest problem we have is, not only is it decriminalized, but the real crux of the matter is, we don't really have enough treatment programs. We don't have enough people out there on the ground at this point to really help these people get off drugs. And that's, I think, where we want to address it with a recovery program. Okay? I, when I didn't, I didn't support the vote last week because I knew this. And if the majority of the board wants to put something, the voter's fine. I'm not going to stand in the way of that. I just want to clarify that this information's already out there that vindicates the sense that we, it was a bad idea. It's not working. But it's interesting to me that while folks want to recriminalize it, which I think is a good idea, because I think it is a public safety as well as a, as a health and human resources problem, they still want to use money from the marijuana thing for help and addiction processes. So let's see how we can hook into that money. I'm 100% sure if we put anything out in May, when is it, 2025?
Four.
2024, we're going to get the same results. I mean, I, it doesn't even, I just don't see it, given this. This was a, I believe it was a statewide, but this is kind of across the board. So we'll just see what we do with it. I do like the idea, quite frankly, of pulling together our other counties and working with them, making it an association of Oregon County prioritize to repeal this piece of it, where it is a criminal activity, but it's also a public health activity. And it's interesting to me that voters see it as both. That's, that's what I found hopeful about this poll. So I just wanted to clarify that, folks, because it's a touchy topic. And I want to do it respectfully and in the way of grace and friendship with my colleagues up here on the podium. Okay? All right. Thanks.
Commissioner Savas, you're up.
I'm not going to say too much. I got, for those of you have your ears plugged up sometimes when you land or you take off an airplane, I have what's called airplane ear. So it hurts to talk. It doesn't hurt so much to listen, and my head's pounding. So I'm not going to say too much.
I want to thank you for coming, though, tonight and voting. I appreciate that a lot.
Welcome back.
I look forward.
Glad to be home.
Next week, when you're able to talk, I look forward to your JPAC update from Washington, DC. I'm sure it was good. Regarding the referral of Measure 110, simply put, illegal illicit use of criminal drugs is not our value system. Correct? I hear that all the time. Whereas it may not be the main cause of homelessness, it certainly is wreaking havoc on our systems. And we get a lot of pushback. We get a lot of complaints. We get a lot of criticism. Why aren't you doing more? Well, what has happened, as you can see, is the addiction to drugs has skyrocketed with a measure of 110 because there's no penalty. You can take meth, you can take heroin, you can take opioids, any drugs, and now with the advent of fentanyl. Narcon does not even work on fentanyl now because they lace it with tranquilizers, horse tranquilizers. So we can't seem, the drug addiction's going like this, and governments are like this. Yeah, you could say we were caught flat-footed, but we're doing the very best that we can. The use of illegal illicit drugs is not our value system. And we refer this to give you people a choice on what you think the legislature and the governor needs to do. There were five bills at least introduced in the House of Representatives. One had a hearing, and the one that had a hearing on Measure 110 only addressed the money. It did not address the decriminalization of drugs. Well, what good is that going to do us? It's not going to do us any good. But on our end, we are getting money from different sources. In a few weeks, the Supported Housing Services measure that actually Clackamas County voters did not approve it, but since we were strapped with Metro, the other two counties approved it, will be coming out using that money on certain programs to try to help this. Last week, this Board of County Commissioners approved the purchase of a new building to put a brand-new mental health facility and treatment centers in, $11 million. It's expanding our current capacity. We are running out of room. We also used some of our ARPA dollars from the federal government, that's basically what we call COVID money, $1.3 million to help a nonprofit organization in Clackamas County to open a women's treatment center. And the list goes on and on and on of what we're doing. So while we seem to be behind the eight ball on this, and we certainly are, we'll never catch up. I don't care how many tens of millions of dollars Tina Kotek sends to our county for housing. If you put people in housing only without addressing their treatment, without making them accountable to their actions, the problem will not be fixed. So that's what we're trying to do. Thank you very much. We also approved Oak Grove Library Land Exchange. So the Oak Grove people out there, we're moving ahead on the library. That's good news. It's something that's been in the making for a very long time. Gary, is that it?
That's it, yes.
That's all my comments. People, thank you for coming. We appreciate your attendance. See, no further business before this commission. We are adjourned.